King of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Nitschfield, give us up, Russi.
Hit that green button, Hallmark. Green comes on. There you go.
Almighty God, we got it this evening here. To conduct the business of this city, we offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all in authority. Granted to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom. They perform their duties in behalf of all thy people. We commend this nation, our armed forces, our law enforcement community, our fine rescue, to their merciful care and understanding. Remember those who are alive on a bed of affliction; help those who mourn. Hear our prayer in thy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Rex?
Here.
Mayor Meltzer.
Item number six on the agenda this evening is a report of the Mayor and City Council, Mr. Smalls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight, but I do want to remind folks that tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room Two is the monthly meeting of the Environmental Affairs Committee. We're setting our agenda for the next several months, so... And it's certainly an open meeting, so we invite anyone who'd like to stop in to stop in. That's all I have.
Ms. Nicholas.
Thank you. I am a self apologizing defendant, being a loyal, passionate candidate. I also intend to be fresh about my opinion of the law intended.
Mr. Les?
September 16th, along with the Mayor and Councilperson Crary, Delegate Jocelyn Peña-Melnick, and Senator Rosa Pepp, I attended the Beltsville Community Meeting arranged by Karen Coakley to discuss the proposed closure of Laurel Regional Hospital. Service area for our Laurel Regional Hospital includes Laurel, Beltsville, and Vansville, with a service area population exceeding 50,000 citizens. We need the acute full service in Laurel, not in Largo, 22 miles, more than 22 minutes down the road. September 19th, I also attended the ribbon cutting for C Street Flats. The leasing rate for these new apartments is above 95% today, and their marketing strategy has included the close proximity to our local Mark Stop. September 26th, I attended the Cops on the Rooftop Event at Dunkin' Donuts. I didn't win one of the baskets, but I made a nice donation. Thank you to the men and women of our Laurel Police Department for their outstanding efforts in behalf of Special Olympics, and thank you to Dunkin' Donuts for partnering with the Laurel Police Department in this worthwhile event. As Councilwoman Nicholas said, we attended Riverfest yesterday. This was a big year for our five-year-old grandson, as at the end of the day, he gave it a thumbs up, followed by "It was great." He did everything. He rode the hayride, and bounced in the bounce, and walked down along the river. Congratulations to the Laurel Board of Trade for this event, and thanks for arranging for the rain to hold off. Condolences to the Henyon family on the passing of Don. He was at Citizens National Bank when my wife and I bought our house from Citizens back in the '70s, so Don had been a good friend since the '70s. Finally, condolences to the Casula family on the passing of Etna. Etna and her husband, Mayor Frank Casula, had been friends of my wife's family since after the war, and Etna and Frank danced at our wedding. We will miss both of these individuals who always had Laurel in their hearts. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Crary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, attended the Lions Car Club. There was 123 entries this year, which is huge. I believe the chief gave an award, and it was for a 1959 Corvette. And the mayor gave one, I think, for a Vega, but I'm not sure on that. The Cops on Rooftops, I believe, when Mike and I were there, it was 10:30 or 11:00 in the morning, they'd already surpassed last year's fundraising, so that was wonderful. On Sunday, I attended and judged at the dog show at McCullough Field, and Wesley Chow won Best in Show. He's a big dog. Riverfest, I think it was the Auburn Convertible, so there's a theme of car shows this month. And July 4th Committee is having their annual guard sale next Saturday at the Armory. Please attend. It's worth at all cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sergeant DePietro, do you know how much they made? Cops on Roo... Well, job well done. Thank you. For my part, I want to thank Mr. Les for the great letter that he put in the Washington Post as a response to some inaccuracies that were written up in the Laurel Leader about not only the railroad station, but also the city, and our efforts to maintain the quality of life that we're trying to do here. I also want to thank everyone that continues to help us in and around the city to save the hospital, as well as to save the railroad station. We continue to strive to make that happen, and I feel very confident that we will succeed. But I want to thank everybody for continuing to help us. Mayor Meltzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Condolences to Tim Brightington and our Park and Recs for the loss of his sister, as well as Jimmy Smith on the loss of his grandmother. As you heard, to the family of Don Henyon, fine individual, and one that gave many, many hours to the city of Laurel. He will be missed, as well as, as said, to Casula, former... Mayor Casula's wife. Get well and speedy recovery to Gary Wagman from our Laurel Police Department, and Mary Blanketip in our Communications Department. Congratu... Excuse me. Congratulations to Corporal Mrs. Barry on the birth of their baby girl, Emily. To the Laurel Lions Club, want to thank them and thank the staff for all their hard work, city forces that participated and helped get the event ready. I think it was a very good turnout, and I know the club appreciates all the work that the city gives to them. The Laurel High School Homecoming Parade started... It was on the 19th, and it was behind the Safeway store there. There was a talk to the principal. We want to help him next year work with them on their parade route and kind of advertise it a little bit more, so everybody knows what's going on when the parade goes down their street. You did hear about C Street Flats. They had their grand opening. I want to thank them for all their hard work in getting the facility open. I think it's a beautiful facility. It works well. It brings foot traffic to Main Street, which is very important. And as you have all seen, they've been a great organization to work with. And at last, I know Mike said 95%, I was told they had two apartments left, so it worked out. I guess that's 95%. I didn't know the numbers to it. The dedication of Monsignor Kessler Parish Center, I want to thank them for the invitation to be there. Keeping Donna, we were there bright and early. We were there about an hour and a half or two early, so they appreciated us getting there on time. Cops on Rooftop at the Dunkin' Donuts, again, the work that the police department does for Special Olympics goes without saying. I congratulate all of them and thank them for their continued support in those efforts. We did have a ribbon cutting over at the grand opening of the Willie, the Bam Johnson's Martial Arts and Fitness Training Facility. That is a new business. It was right outside the city limits. They moved into the city. They do, Chief, they do a lot with kids, mentoring. I told them that I'd send you and Audrey over there, because I think there's some things that you may be interested in, Chief, as well as Audrey, in doing some things there. They're doing wonderful things. It's a great location. They moved over to the, what I call, the old blue and white buildings across from the Safeway Center there, so he hopes to grow. And I, again, it was a very good time, and I appreciate it. They gave me an honorary black belt, so y'all be careful. The Toastmasters Area 73 Contest was held, and I want to thank them for taking part and inviting me to bring them greetings, as well as you heard about Riverfront Park. I want to thank the Board of Trade for all their hard work and what they did, and I think it was a great day, and the rain did hold off. Plus, our annual dog show at McCullough Field. Thank you to our Park and Rec staff for their hard work and the volunteers that put that on. Just a couple of announcements. July 4th, as you heard, their indoor yard sale will be at the Laurel Army from 8:00 until 1:00. First Generation College Bound, their 12th Annual 5K Run and Two Mile Walk will take place on October the 3rd. This is a new route that they'll be running, and registration starts at 7:45, and the run-walk will start at 8:45, and the race begins at 9:00. So we want to, you know, take note. As I said, they'll be running through the community, and there'll be some new routes and streets that we'll have to close off. Fire Prevention Week is coming up. Our fire marshals here probably give us a little talk about fire prevention. I want to remind everybody, the city election is on November the 3rd, from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. You can go to the DePietro Center for War II. Word one would go here. Early voting is October the 31st, from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM, which is here in this facility. Let me go down. We have a proclamation that reads, "Whereas the city of Laurel is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Laurel, and whereas the fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally in homes that are located where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Whereas home fires killed 2,755 people in the United States in 2013, according to the National Fire Protection Agency, and the fire departments in the United States responded over 3,369,500 fire... house fires. And whereas working smoke detectors got the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas three out of five home fires... home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke detectors. Whereas one-fifth of all homes with smoke detectors, none were working, and whereas smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was unusual because batteries were missing or disconnected, or they were dead. Whereas half the homes of fire deaths result in fires reported at night between 11:00 AM and 7:00 AM... 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are sleeping. And whereas first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fire... home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas residents are responsive to the public education measures, and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas in 2015, Fire Prevention Week themed, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm, effectively saves... serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us time to get out to safety. Now therefore, I crag and emote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim October the 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week." Dave?
You want to give us a little message?
Thank you. As the mayor said, this October month is here to beep where you sleep. Just a couple of quick things. The city of Laurel has a code that you have to have smoke detectors in each bedroom and on each level, and a CO detector. One of the biggest things we're going to reach out to October is reaching out to realtors, because the realtors are selling houses, just like I was in one today, and it only had two smoke detectors in the entire house. So we're going to try to reach out to the realtors that you really need to install these smoke detectors, because if you don't have a house that is fully sprinkled, the smoke detector is what's going to get you out of the house. The last thing I want to say about a smoke detector is I try to encourage everybody to understand, is the smoke detector is only good for 10 years. If you lived in your house for 11 years and that smoke detector's been there, it needs to be replaced. So if you pull the smoke detector down, the back of it has a date. If you're not sure about it, please call the City of Laurel Fire Marshal's office. I have several inspectors. They do a great job. They'll come out there and look at your house. They'll install a smoke detector if needed. They'll test your smoke detector. But, you know, the biggest thing, "Hear the beep where you sleep," so I'd say, check your smoke detectors. If you have any questions, please call our office. Thank you, sir.
I have another proclamation for 2015-16. Whereas in 1890, Frank and Sarah Carter organized the home mission known as St. Mark's Methodist Episcopal Church. And whereas St. Mark's Methodist Episcopal Church consisted of 28 parishes, and was organized under the supervision of Reverend Henry... Supervision of McHenry J. Naylor, a circuit rider preacher. And whereas in 1893, Reverend Stuart A. Lewis was appointed the first pastor of St. Mark's Church and formed the Laurel Charge, which consisted of St. Mark's Church, Queens Chapel Methodist Episcopal Church, and in 1895 added Mount Zion Church, sharing the ministry. And whereas in 1968, under the leadership of Reverend John Evans, St. Mark's Methodist Church merged with the Methodist Episcopal Church, the Methodist Episcopal Church South, and the Methodist Protestant Church, and the Evangelist United Method from St. Mark's United Methodist Church. And whereas in 1976, the Laurel Charge was dissolved, and Reverend Douglas Logan was appointed the first pastor of the St. Mark's as a station church, followed by Reverend George F. Ford in 1993, Reverend John J. Jenkins II in 2001, 2008, Reverend Robbie Morganfield in 2008 to 14, and Dr. Sonia King in 2014. Whereas St. Mark's Methodist Church continues to provide opportunities for its members spiritually growth through Bible study, prayer, ministry, Christian education, youth activities, and adult ministries. Now therefore, I crag and emote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim and congratulate St. Mark's United Methodist Church on its 125th anniversary, October the 18th, 2015. I hope I didn't mess some of those names up. Come on up. Hope I got it right.
Thank you so much. Okay. Good evening. I'd just like to say thank you to the city and to...
Tell me who you are. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Nina Hughes. I'm a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church. My great-grandmother and great-grandfather helped to build St. Mark's United Methodist Church, as well as everything that you read, and we are honored that we are celebrating this fantastic anniversary, and we do thank you all for giving us this proclamation and recognizing St. Mark's United Methodist Church as a pillar in this community. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You know, just had Emancipation Day that was done by St. Mark's. They continue to do great things in the community, and we thank them for all the support that they give us. So thank you for coming. We were glad. I will not be able to make the event. I'm out of state for my niece's wedding, so I don't know if other council members will be there, but we hope you'll share that with your congregation that night. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. At this time, it's 7:18, and I'll open the general public hearing for anyone that has anything to speak about or to give us any kind of a recommendation. Yes, sir. Come forward. Mr. Hopkins?
Yes, Eddie's Commissioner.
Mister? I'm sorry.
He'll probably say... Hit your... Till you got the green light, Eddie.
There it is. Well, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. As I said, I'm Eddie Hopkins. I'm the Town Commissioner of Bel Air, and I've been on the board for eight years, serving two years as your mayor, but not here to talk politics. Actually, wanted to come down, and in November, my term will expire, and I'm moving on to a newer job that will cause some conflicts with being a town commissioner and being able to contribute to the community. And as I've learned in my eight years, the American... Local government clearly is the purest form of government. Municipal government is, where you have the chance really to work with people and do good things, and have the kind of interaction like we just talked about here with the church's anniversary and so forth. But the reason I come before you tonight mainly is I wanted to compliment the city of Laurel. When I became involved as an elected official eight years ago, one of the very first people I met was Mayor Moe and other members of your staff, and who set a fine example for me to begin my career as an elected official. As a result of that, the mayor, through his work with MML, appointed me as a member of the Homeland... Rather, the HEPAAC Committee, which is the Homeland Emergency Advisory Committee to MML. And as a result of that, I had a chance to work with Marty and Kevin, involving me deeper into the... to a partnership with Laurel that I never had ever expected to be a part of until I became a part of it. And I'm really here, more than anything, to say tonight that you guys have an amazing city. You have an amazing staff. You have a staff that is deeply involved in public safety. I can't speak to all the other things that you all do, but I can only speak to my subject matter expertise, which is public safety. And having worked with Marty and Kevin, and Ms. Crary, and Mayor Moe, and other members of your staff, I just couldn't help but take a few minutes out of my day to come down to publicly go on the record in front of your town citizens here to just tell them how blessed they are to have a community of elected officials like yourself who believe so strongly in public safety, who take it extremely seriously and work very hard to protect your residents. In an environment today where budgets are cut and we have to find ways to save money, oftentimes, public safety does find itself near the bottom, because there's things that we may need that maybe just don't rise up on the priority list. Laurel's not that way. You clearly have taken a forward, very proactive approach, and that's clearly obvious when Mr.... when Mayor Moe was part of MML and in his design of HEPAAC. That actually spread like wildfires statewide. We got a lot of very fine recognition for creating that ad hoc committee, which opened up municipal leaders' eyes across the streets to the disasters they face across the state. And basically, Maryland has experienced every type of disaster or catastrophic event. We all have seen fires and police events here in our jurisdiction where we've had to raise the public safety benchmark. So I really didn't want to take a lot of time, but I take, and I've stolen some of Mayor Moe's and yours ideas. I've taken those examples back and used them as bases and platforms for my political career in Bel Air, which has been, I'd like to think, has been successful. And it's been successful by examples that people in your commission have set. So again, without... Again, without taking too much of your time, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done to make my political career successful and to make... Help me understand municipal government. A special thanks to Marty and Kevin and Ms. Crary, who absolutely have been phenomenal in the public safety sector. They represent Laurel well, and of course, my compliments to Mayor Moe. His leadership with MML and the creation of HEPAAC has had a significant impact on making municipal leaders prepared for disasters across the street, and that reflects extremely positive on your city. So thank you to each and every one of you for my time spent with you. I'm not leaving, Maryland. I'm staying. I'll always be close if you need something, but I just have to step back from politics so that I... So... Because my job is going to conflict with my role as an elected official, and it's too much to try and manage. So anyway, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and keep up... Please keep up the good work. You're a stellar city.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you coming down, taking your time.
If I could. Eddie, thank you very much for coming. That's very thoughtful of you to come all this way to say that on... I know many of the members of the staff have worked with you, as well as members of the council here. You've done outstanding work, I think, with Barry Glassman's appointment for you as Hartford County's emergency preparedness director. I think that says a lot. We wish you the very best. We look forward to continuing working with you, and tell Barry to come on down and visit us sometime. You can bring him on down. So thank you very much. I appreciate that very much.
Be well, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:23. We'll move on to item number eight, which is a consideration of a bid for bid recommendation for employee insurance, health, dental, and vision. Mr. Green.
Good evening. You should have before you a memorandum of bid recommendation on employee insurance. With the help of the Melzer Group, the city's broker, we have bid employee health and dental insurance with the desire to receive bids on the six forms of insurance the city currently provides. The FY 2016 budget provides $2,149,000 for employee coverage and an additional $172,000 for retiree coverage. City received a renewal offer from our current provider, United Healthcare, reflecting a 21.7% increase effective November 1. To better control costs, we went out to bid from a variety of providers. We received bids from Care First with a proposal of premiums 35.96% over current rates, from Cigna Healthcare with a proposal with premiums 1.92% above current rates, Kaiser Permanente bid 4.84% above current rates, and United Healthcare, as I said, provided a proposal at 21.7% above current rates. United also is currently providing our dental insurance, and we bid that as well. Etna provided a proposal at 7.28% below current rates. Cigna had an offer of .48% below current rates and a $40,000 credit if offered with Cigna Health Insurance. And United Healthcare had an offer at 7.99% above current rates. Proposals received were evaluated by staff and considered provider network and disruption, the benefit package, the out-of-pocket expenses, and the premium. The apparent low bid was Cigna Healthcare. Cigna has no gated HMO products. Everything they offer is open access. They have designed for us a somewhat more affordable, basic HMO product that still meets the Platinum standard under the Affordable Care Act for those that may be interested. Their disruption study indicates a 97.6% match with providers that our employees are currently using. Cigna is also offering two PPO dental plans with benefits very similar to the plans we have offered in recent years, but including a higher maximum annual benefit. They are also offering a $40,000 premium reduction in the health plan if we take both the health and dental. Cigna has also offered a voluntary vision plan that would provide eye exams and an additional voluntary buy-up for the purchase of contact lenses or eyeglasses. An employee might select either of these plans if they have enrolled in either the health or the dental plan. My recommendation at this time is that the Mayor and City Council award coverage as follows: that the contract for employee health insurance be awarded to Cigna Healthcare for the basic HMO plan, the Cigna Open Access Plan, and the Cigna Open Access Plus Plan; that the contract for employee dental insurance be awarded to Cigna for their low PPO MAC plan and their high PPO 90th UCR plan; and that the award include the Cigna Basic Vision Plan and Buy-Up Vision Plan for enrollees of either the health insurance or dental insurance. Predicting the cost of health and dental coverage is difficult, because it is not known at this time who will come in and select which of the options offered, particularly as people leave and new hires are brought on. Computing the cost based on current enrollment produces the following projections for the city's share of premiums: on the health insurance, $1,837,359.55; the dental plan, $120,731.71; the vision plan, $3,808.99, for a total of $1,961,925. This award will provide coverage for only eight months of the current fiscal year, so the required funding for this contract for the balance of the year becomes $1,307,933.50. Current budget is more than adequate to cover this expense for the eight months of coverage included in FY 2016.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Green, in the group that worked on the bid and the recommendation, am I mistaken in thinking that in the past, part of that group had been made up of city employees? I mean...
The city has had a committee that it...
Right.
...stunned it in the past. Several years ago, we started using Melzer, a broker, rather than a formal...
Several years ago, we started using Melzer, a broker, rather than a formal bid process. It gives them the opportunity to actually talk to the bidders and discuss variations in their proposal, rather than a strict typical bid, which says, you design, we would design a package and ask for their cost. Doesn't allow for any negotiation after the fact. Whatever is bid is what you have. Using a broker gives us some opportunity to negotiate.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Crary.
Looks good. Thank you for your headwork.
Mr. Lesz.
I'll file for this, Mr. President.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Did you have something else, Ms. Green?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Lesz?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President Rick?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Item number nine has been continued till the next meeting of October the twenty-sixth at seven p.m. Item number ten is the second, I'm sorry.
October twenty-sixth, I think it's the fourteenth.
The fourteenth?
Yes.
Oh, September the, no, is it the fourteenth or the twenty-sixth?
I believe it was asked that it be continued until the mayor and city council meeting on the twenty-sixth of October. Because the planning commission is meeting on the twentieth.
Do we need a motion for the continuance?
Yes.
I think you should. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
To table.
I have Mr. Smalls, and Ms. Crary has a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, let me clarify. This is a motion to continue, so it doesn't have to be brought off the table. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other concerns? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lesz?
Yes.
President Rick?
Yes. Item number ten, the second public hearing for possible action on ordinance number 1855, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets within the FY 2016 through FY 2021 capital improvements program. Mr. Free.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this ordinance is coming up the second time. It's just moving money around into the capital improvement projects. There was bond money for major facility maintenance for park paths of $150,000. There was bond, state bond money for $150,000 for renovations to the Anderson Murphy Building, $40,000 in PEG money for information technology, and $10,000 in PEG money for Laurel TV studio upgrades.
Is there any questions from council? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Crary.
I move that we accept ordinance number 1855, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets in the FY 2016 through 2021 capital improvement program.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lesz. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Lesz?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Rick?
Yes.
Mayor Moe?
Is there anything else to come forward to council tonight? Seeing none, we are adjourned at seven thirty-three.